Hello, everybody. Just give us a couple more minutes. All right. Looks like we've stopped having new people join, so we will begin our meeting. Good evening. This is item 1.1, Call to Order of Open Session. I would like to call to order the July 22, 2020 Governing Board of Trustees Regular Meeting at 4:47 PM. By law and board policy, I must notify you that this meeting is being recorded. The Governor has declared, the Governor of California has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, aka coronavirus. The Governor issued an executive order N2520, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference and video calls while still satisfying state transparency requirements. The Governor has also issued an executive order N3320, prohibiting people from leaving their homes or places of residence except to access necessary supplies and services or to engage in specified critical infrastructure employment. The public's involvement are the top priority for the Delmar Union School District Governing Board of Trustees. And you all are to take appropriate health and safety precautions. To facilitate this process, the meeting of the Governing Board has been made available on the district's website. Members of the public who would like to address the Governing Board regarding an item on the agenda must go to the link provided at the online agenda. The link can be found on the front page of the Agenda Item 1.1, to be heard regarding a closed session Agenda Item, Item 4.2 to be heard regarding an item not on the agenda, or Item 5.4 to be heard regarding an item on the agenda. Complaints submit the online request to provide a public input form with the link provided. Once you have submitted the form and joined the Zoom meeting, please click on the raise hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if you're dialing in, call *9 to raise your hand. This will let the moderator know that you have submitted a speaker form and would like to address the board. If you are unable to access the live link to the request to provide a public input form, please email Megan Bennett at m-bennett@dmusd.org, two N's, two T's. Item 1.2 is roll call. I will now take roll call of the board members who are present at the meeting. Member Woodin.
Here.
Member Raffner.
Here.
Member Mock.
Here.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Here.
And I'm here. All Governing Board members are present. Item 1.3, Public Input Concerning Items on a Closed Session Agenda. And we have none. Item 1.4 is adjournment into closed session. The Governing Board will adjourn to closed session. This Zoom meeting will remain open. The Board will reconvene and rejoin this open session when the closed session is adjourned at approximately 5:45 PM. Items on a closed session agenda are Item 2.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Pending Litigation. Item 2.2, Conference with Labor Negotiator. Item 2.3, Consider Personnel Issues. And now we will convene into closed session. Hello, everybody. Looks like we have the whole board here. Okay, so we are at Item 3.1, Reconvening Open Session. So we are, open session is reconvened at 5:51 PM. 3.2, Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. The Governing Board met in closed session and no action was taken. Item 3.3, The Pledge of Allegiance. Holly, will you please lead us in our remote pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so if you're on, if you're listening in, settle in because we have a long list of items related to our CFDs that need to be voted on. So we are at Item 3.5, Call to Order, Meeting of Legislative Body of CFD Number 951. And Holly, could you introduce that item for us, please?
Sure. Did you, did we approve the agenda yet?
President. Okay, Item 3.4, Approval of the Agenda. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Catherine, okay, second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Scott. We'll do roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye approved, so the motion carries and the agenda is passed. Item 3.5 is Call to Order Meeting of Legislative Body of CFD Number 951. Holly.
So I'd like to welcome Doug Floyd from Coppola and Gruber, who assists the district with our CFDs and will assist and be here for the board tonight on this annual item. So welcome, Mr. Floyd.
Thank you very much.
If you could give a few of what is on the agenda for this evening, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. McClurg. Good evening, board members, district cabinet, members of the audience. Again, I'm Doug Floyd. We're the CFD administrators. These items are presented to the board on an annual basis around this time of year. These items establish the tax levies to be placed on the tax roll for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Collection of the revenues from the special taxes are used to repay debt that has been issued to pay for public infrastructure. So the first item regarding the 95-1, those bond issuances paid for the Ocean Air and Torrey Hills schools primarily. And then you'll have later in the agenda approval of the tax rates for the 99-1 CFD, which covers the Pacific Highlands Ranch area and primarily has funded the Sycamore Ridge School and is intended also on the Pacific Highlands Ranch School. So with that, I'll leave it up to any other, any questions from the board as you go through these items.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you for that explanation. The next item is 3.6, Board Approval Agenda for the Meeting of Legislative Body of CFD Number 951. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion carries. Item 3.7 is Board Approval Minutes of the July 31, 2019, CFD Number 951 Meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Catherine. Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick? I can't hear you, Catherine. Are you aye? Member Fitzpatrick?
Sorry, can you hear me? Aye, sorry.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Okay, great. Aye for me and the motion to approve the minutes carries. Item 3.8 is Board Approval Resolution Number CFD 95-94, Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Delmar Union School District, acting as legislative body of the Community Facilities District 951, determining adjustments in special tax rates for such Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2021. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. Item 3.9 is Board Approval of Resolution Number CFD 95-95, Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Delmar Union School District, acting as legislative body of the Community Facilities District 951, establishing a budget for fiscal year 2021, directing the levy of a special tax and taking related actions. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. So the resolution passes. Now we're at Item 3.10, Board Approval, Adjournment of the Meeting of Legislative Body of CFD Number 951. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the adjournment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. So the meeting is adjourned. Now we're going to do it again for the next CFD. This usually goes a lot faster without a roll call vote, which is required for a Zoom meeting. Okay, Item 3.1 is Call to Order Meeting of Legislative Body of CFD Number 991. Doug, is there anything else to add on this CFD?
Uh, no, I briefly went over it previously. This CFD covers the Pacific Highlands Ranch area. And again, this is establishing that the levy for the forthcoming fiscal year and the levies are used to repay the debt primarily.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. The meeting is, well, I just took call to order, but I'll do 3.2, 1-2, Board Approval Agenda for the Meeting of Legislative Body of CFD Number 991. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Aye for me. Agenda is approved. 3.13, Board Approval Minutes of the July 31, 2018, CFD Number 991 Meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's you, uh, roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. 3.14, Board Approval Minutes of the October 23, 2019, CFD 99 Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. The minutes are approved. 3.15, Board Approval of Resolution Number CFD 99, Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Delmar Union School District, acting as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District 991, determining adjustments in special tax rates for such Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Okay, aye for me and the resolution passes. 3.6 is Board Approval of Resolution Number CFD 9961, Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Delmar Union School District, acting as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District Number 991, establishing a budget for fiscal year 2021, directing the levy of a special tax and taking related actions. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me and the resolution passes. 3.17, Adjournment of the Meeting of Legislative Body of CFD Number 991. Who wants to do it? Motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the adjournment of the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Member Woodin?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. The meeting is adjourned. Woo, all right, we did it. Okay. 4.1 is Correspondence. Dr. McClurg.
Good evening. The superintendent's office has received the following correspondence since the previous meeting. Many inquiries related to COVID-19, including, most of those were regarding the learning programs for next year, in-person learning and distance learning, 47 emails to be exact. And then regarding the Delmar Heights Elementary rebuild, there were some emails, several emails regarding that project, the Delmar Heights Elementary Fields, and one email regarding board meetings and one email regarding our summer camps program. That concludes the superintendent's correspondence.
Thank you. Item 4.2 is Hearing of the Public Regarding Non-Agenda Items. We will now address members of the public who have requested, we will call out members of the public who have requested to address the Governing Board regarding items that are not on the agenda. We have one, and that is Amy Caterina. So Chris, can we bring her into the call?
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Hi, I know a lot of you and, you know, I've lived here in the district for over 25 years and makes me sound really old, but I've seen a lot, good and the bad. And I'm really impressed with, with how everything's being done in the district right now. I know that there's some hiccups here and there, but I think it's a vast improvement over what we've had in previous administrations. However, right now, we're, we're in a situation where we, we, we need to bring more parents to the table. So I'm here talking to you again about San Diego schools. I'm trying to encourage folks who are involved in the Delmar Union School District to join our team. We're looking for district representatives for every district in San Diego. There were 43 of them. And we need someone from Delmar to step up and be an advocate for parents and students. Your responsibilities would be monitoring board meetings, just keeping track of what's going on with the district. If, if there are any, any parents or community members who are interested, they can contact the organization through our website, sandiegoschools.net, our Facebook page, San Diego Schools, or at info@san diegoschools.net. We are stronger when we work together. We have, we have advocates from Oceanside to Sweetwater. We need someone now in Delmar and I'm hoping that, that perhaps there's someone who attends a lot of meeting, who's meetings, who's already involved and who's interested and perhaps joining our organization to help us coordinate with other parents in DMUSD to bring about some positive changes and make sure that parents get a seat at the table. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. So next we have Item 5.1, the DMCTA Report with Kevin Kuna, President. Just give us a moment if he joins the call. You're in, but you're on mute. There you go.
Took a moment there. All right, Doug, thank you. President Halpern and members of the board, Dr. McClurg and members of the cabinet, good evening. So over the past year, I've watched my good friend and colleague David Skinner give these updates all while knowing my turn was coming soon and I would inherit this job. But as you can see, I didn't inherit the suit. So nevertheless, I'm here to provide the update on DMCTA business. To begin, I'd like to say thank you to the board on behalf of DMCTA and its members. Throughout the spring and even during the summer, you have taken the time to meet with teachers both in person and via Zoom in order to hear their points of view and also to help us understand yours. These meetings have meant a great deal to teachers and we just wanted to say thank you. Along with that, with our PAC organizing those meetings, with the school board, the DMCTA Executive Board has also been pretty busy, along with the negotiations, co-chairs, working to finalize our negotiations to include the occupational therapists, who are our newest members to DMCTA, into our current bargaining agreement. Along with those negotiations, our team has also begun laying the groundwork for a temporary agreement, or MOU, for the 2020-2021 school year. Our first step in that process was to survey our bargaining unit members. It was a brief survey and designated to give us input to guide the development of our proposal. Out of 276 members, we had 222 answer that survey. So that was a brief survey and designed to give us input, like I said, to guide the proposal. In the survey, we did ask teachers about their comfort level returning to school in person and the results clearly showed that a large number, and when I mean large, well over 55% of teachers currently feel uncomfortable about doing so. With that said, we also asked our teachers what safety measures could be put in place above and beyond current guidelines that we, that would help them to feel more comfortable about returning to the classroom. Those responses did play a big role in the development of the proposal. I'm only pointing this out because it's my hope that this agreement will give assurance to both teachers and families that our district, along with the Teachers Association, are doing our absolute best to protect everyone as we prepare to reopen schools. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. We are at Item 5.2, which is Board Member Reports. On this same topic, I will say that Jiwa and I attended a meeting of the Teachers Association Political Action Committee on Zoom on Tuesday, July 14th. It had more than 100 teachers in attendance. I attended the parent webinar on reopening last night. I imagine other board members did too. I'll turn over to Scott to share any updates.
Get off mute there. Nothing really to report this month since, this is usually a quiet month and with the pandemic, there's not much even more going on with it. I did listen to a tape delay because I wasn't able to watch it live for that meeting or that Zoom meeting yesterday about the reopening plans. I hope that we can get to a point where we can reopen and have parents have a choice as to whether they want to do it, the distance learning launch or having their kids in school. I'd love to see the kids in school because I think it's important for social, emotional well-being and for proper education. But we'll, we'll take it and we'll do everything as safely as we can possibly do it. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Doug.
Well, I, I had a site visit with Holly and Chris and Jenny Ha at what is a real success story in our community and that is a summer camp that's going on at the Jewish Community Center in La Jolla, where they actually have in-person camp going on with social distancing and very clear-minded requirements as it relates to temperature taking and staffing and kind of keeping people in a bubble. Think, think NBA, if you will, as much as they possibly can. And they're using tents and the outdoors as much as possible is very impressive. And so it was nice to see that and that came right before Governor Newsom gave his speech last Friday. So it'll be interesting to see how things go, but it is good to know that there are entities in the community that, that can do this. It can work well without serious health concerns that have happened thus far. So that's all I have for, for this month and I wish everybody health and let's get through this.
I'm assuming I'm next. I didn't really have too much to share. I-
Sorry, my internet's freezing a little bit.
Yeah, usually I'm the one that has the internet problems. It's, it's surprising. Yeah, I don't really have too much to share. Erica basically kind of said the things that we were at. I, we met with some teachers at the, for the PAC meeting and I was glad to be able to hear what they had to say and I hope that they felt they had an opportunity to, to speak up and share their thoughts. And then I also listened to the webinar as well yesterday and I thought it was well-presented and I appreciate the effort that was put into all that. It's clearly like, there's a lot of effort that went into that, Holly. Thank you very much. So that's pretty much all I have for today. Thanks.
Okay, Catherine?
No, I have nothing to report this month.
Okay, Item 5.3, Superintendent's Report.
You're welcome to, and I know I speak on behalf of all of our staff who've been doing a lot to be able to communicate with our public about everything that's going on and our teachers as well have been doing a lot this summer to be prepared for the fall. We've got many signed up for a leading-edge certification, which is distance learning training this summer, doing a lot behind the scenes to prepare as well as other things. So thank you to everybody for doing that. I also want to thank Kevin Kuna, the DMCTA President, and their leadership and teachers throughout our district to continue to have conversations with us about the fall and bringing our children back to school and our staff back to school safely. Their input and even the results of their survey helped us in addition to the questions that they provided all of us in the district to prepare a webinar that we actually had for teachers yesterday morning. And we're able to, we were able to share a lot of information based on their questions and put things in place, given what our teachers are talking about as well as, as others. Last night, we did have, as Jiwa mentioned, and Erica, a webinar for our parents about our reopening plans and our plans for the fall for launch as well, which is our distance learning program. I want to thank our staff who's done an incredible job preparing and working literally around the- and working literally around the clock, and I'm not exaggerating. There are texts going back and forth in the middle of the night, and people waking up, thinking about these things all night long, and I want to thank our staff for doing that and for having that continue month after month, um all for the all of the for what's r- right for our children. And um that is really what keeps keeps us going and also keeps us awake at night, is we want to be able to do what's best and right for our children and be able to bring our sta- staff back safely. So thank you for everyone who's being a part of that conversation, hard work, and decision-making as we go along the way. I also feel very fortunate that we have a community of very involved parents at this time. It is very helpful to be able to reach out to so many of our parents and have them reach out to me, parents who are physicians. They are physicians doing important work in our community, related to COVID, related to pandemic, related to keeping us all healthy and safe. They have very important input to share, and they choose share the desire to have our children come back to school and have our staff and all of us return in the best and safest way possible. So having that expertise help uh help us as we make decisions along the way has also and continues to be very important and very powerful in our decision-making throughout the throughout the the throughout our our planning stages. Doug, thank you so much, President Raf- or excuse me, Board Member Rafner, for facilitating and making that visitation to ju- the Jewish Community Center happen. It was wonderful to see a success story right before our eyes, to see three hundred children in one location um actually participating in a in a in a school-like fashion. It obviously was a camp, but helped us envision what it will look like for our schools when we extend our classrooms and when we actually make learning come back to life at at an actual school site where children and and staff members are physically present. And to see the the the, first of all, the excitement and the leadership of the JCC and the planning that they've gone through was wonderful, and to be able to tap into that is very, very helpful as well. And also to see the mo- most importantly, to see the joy and laughter of children and staff members and their camp counselors was i- it talk about motivation for me. It was truly inspiring and truly a wonderful thing. So thank you for arranging that, and I it makes me excited about our our planning as we move ahead. We continue to have a lot of meeting ver- meetings virtually, including with our DMSCF. Thank you to our DMSCF um President Phoebe Katzell, who has been working with the foundation reps along the way to get us poised for the next school year. We are meeting with our PTA presidents tomorrow, the principals, and I, as we think about um things that PTAs can be thinking about relating to the schools and and readying our our parent group and our communities in being able to welcome in the fall. So a lot of planning is happening. I'm grateful for everybody and every and wearing every different hat um and everything that that's going on behind the scenes to get us prepared as we all think about doing what's best for our children. So thank you to everybody, and I look forward to the next month, which will be sure to be a very full one, and I encourage everyone to stay involved. We have another webinar tomorrow evening for our parents, part two. So it was great to re- receive additional questions after at the end of part one last night. We will address those tomorrow uh at webinar part two. And thank you to our parents in advance and our community members for being involved. We had about one thousand participants at last night's webinar. So we appreciate all of your your contributions and the fact that you're paying attention and helping us make good decisions. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're looking forward to hearing more about that topic a little later on the agenda. Um five point four is public input concerning items on the agenda. We already have some speakers slip in, but this is a call for public input um requi- regarding items on the agenda.
Yeah, Jiwa, I'd be happy to. Um and I will be uh showing some pictures and talking a little more in my report, but I can tell you that we've already installed at two of our sites. Uh Mike Galis and his team have worked uh closely eh with uh a vendor to be able to go through and identify spaces to where we have plumbing and we're able to install them there. Rather than doing something that was short-term, we know that that this is a need to have more hand washing anyway, and at the cost, it made a lot more sense for us to install and install them in multiple places so that we'd be able to provide opportunities for our students to wash hands uh outside of the restroom, uh in in the fresh air, and and have them eh eh more than at a three, four, five p- places eh across the campus um for now and then for the long term.
Fantastic. Thank you. I love it. Uh it was I before I was thinking that, you know, it would be like one of those kind of pumping things at the fair, so I'm really glad that these are, you know, eh permanents installed and they're, you know, kids are always going to be able to use them from now on here on end. So that's fantastic. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Jiwa. Catherine, is that you the second?
I will, I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Member Wood?
Aye.
Member Rafner?
Aye.
Member Mark?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Aye for me. Motion to approve the consent agenda has passed. Seven point one is a board report on student and staff health and school preparation for the twenty twenty-one school year with uh Jenny Ha, Director of Student Services. We do have two speakers. Just to remind everybody of the process, we'll hear the staff's report. Then um the board will have a chance to ask any clarifying questions. We will hear our two speakers, and then we have an opportunity for any additional discussion. Um so with that, I'll turn it over to you, Jenny.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Halpern, Dr. McClurgie, and members of the board. Tonight, I will be presenting you with an update to the safe reopening planning for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, and and reviewing the recent changes made by the state to the guidelines regarding the safe reopening of our schools. Next slide. On Friday, as I'm sure you're aware, Governor Newsom and the California Department of Public Health released an update to the criteria for reopening schools, which restricted counties that are on the state monitoring list from reopening schools. Next slide. Specifically, the criteria states that school districts may reopen for in-person instruction at any time if they are located in a county or a local health jurisdiction that has not been on the county monitoring list within the prior fourteen days. If the county has been on the monitoring list within the last fourteen days, the schools must conduct distance learning until the county is off the monitoring list for at least fourteen days. San Diego has been on the state monitoring list since July sixth. Next slide. You also may have heard that the state is allowing districts to apply for a waiver or an exemption for meeting the reopening criteria. The order states that a waiver may be requested by a superintendent in consultation with labor, parent and community organizations. The local health department in consultation with the California Department of Public Health could approve the waiver based on local community epidemiological data. Next slide. So when determining which counties are placed on the monitoring list, the health departments are really considering different factors within the areas of epidemiology, hospital capacity and public health. So some of the triggers that result in a county being placed on the monitoring list are case rate, positivity rate, increasing hospitalization and the availability of ICU beds. So if you attended the webinar yesterday, you'll recognize this is actually the data from yesterday. They update the data each evening. So this is today's report from yesterday's data. It is, you can see that we are, the one area that we are not, that we are causing a trigger is that case rate. So we're above the one hundred per one hundred thousand people in the population and that is what is causing us to trigger onto the state monitoring list. Next slide. So after, after the, that the update was provided by the state, the current order in the San Diego Public Health Order was also updated to state that all schools in San Diego County shall conduct instruction through distance learning only. So right now, this is our current health order and it was updated on Monday, July twentieth. Next slide. All right. So even though the current order is that San Diego County schools are closed, we are still continuing to actively prepare and plan for reopening schools so that we are prepared to return once we're given the green light. So we continue to meet with our planning committees to develop our safe reopening plan. We have been meeting with our district reopening committee really since the spring, but now the focus is moving more toward a site level planning to really address the needs specific to the operations of each school site. So the school site committee will be led by principals and will involve any staff member that is interested in participating and will also provide opportunities for parent participation. And we're also creating a district reopening task force that will be an opportunity to include a variety of perspectives from parent groups, PTA, DMSCF reps, DMCTA reps and some members of our leadership team. Next slide. So in my presentation last month, I reviewed each of the guidelines for reopening schools that were provided by the California Department of Public Health. So you may remember that there were ten guidelines and this, this new updated guideline has two additional guidelines. So I will be reviewing what's been updated and any changes since last month. Next slide. So since the governor's announcement on Friday regarding school reopening, the public health provided updates to the guidelines. We will be following all of the guidelines as part of the reopening plan. We will be providing instruction to our students and staff on proper hand washing protocols and providing increased opportunities for hand washing throughout the day. As Chris was just reporting, we've installed hand washing stations outside of the restrooms to provide additional opportunities for hand washing. And that also facilitates distancing because it allows for reduced congregating in the bathroom so that the students may go outside and be outdoors to wash their hands as other students come into the restrooms. There has been a change to the requirement for symptom and temperature checks. Temperature checks will no longer be required for students. We will continue to conduct symptom checks and temperature checks for staff, but we will not be required to conduct temperature checks for students. We will be conducting wellness checks on students each day to really monitor for signs, signs or symptoms of illness. We've also provided each site with no touch thermometers. So if any student or staff is feeling ill throughout the day, a temperature screen can immediately still be conducted. And then finally, in the new order from the governor, it is indicated that because school staff are essential workers, districts will be expected to conduct periodic surveillance testing of staff. And that is brand new from the recent order. Next slide. Okay, so the order indicated that districts shall conduct periodic testing of staff. We're waiting on for more guidance from the state regarding the specifics of this, but we do expect that we will be collaborating with local health agencies to provide periodic testing of staff. And they've given an example of being able to provide periodic testing of maybe fifty percent of the staff twice monthly. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this one, there's been quite a bit of talk about face coverings. And even though the prior order from the state, from, from Governor Newsom, required anyone over the age of three to wear a face covering, the guideline for schools had been an exception and there was no requirement at that time for students to wear face coverings. So according to this new order, the state is strongly encouraging students in kindergarten to second grade to wear a face covering and requiring face coverings for grades three to six. Because we're committed to all students returning to school safely, we will be requiring face coverings for all of our students kindergarten through sixth grade. So we know students will not always be able to maintain distancing. And we, so this may especially be a challenge for our younger students, our kindergarten and second grade students. So if they are not able to maintain that distancing, it seems even more important that they would be wearing a face covering. So because of that, we will be requiring all students to wear face coverings to ensure the highest level of safety. We have purchased supplies of face coverings and face shields that will be provided to each school for our students and staff. And so anyone who comes to school without a face covering or who gets their face covering dirty or lost will be able to have a new one that will be provided by the school. In addition, we're ordering plexiglass barriers that will sit on a tabletop and those will be available for teachers or staff to use to facilitate, facilitate small group instruction or any kind of small group interaction face to face. Okay, next slide. Okay, there aren't any changes to the physical distancing guideline, but I did want to address it because it has been something that we've had questions about and I just want to continue to reiterate that we are committed to maintaining distancing to the extent practicable for our students. And so the state requirement continues to require six feet between staff desks and student desks. The order continues to state that distancing between students be maintained to the extent practicable. And just to clarify, that is determined directly by the guidelines from the California Department of Public Health. That's not our language. It's provided by the state and the Department of Public Health. So we will be following the guidelines for facilitating distancing between students and staff as much as possible. And again, this is, as we look at this and think about our younger students, we know how difficult that is to ask them to try to stay a certain number of feet away from one another. So that is why, once again, we are requiring and kind of going above and beyond what the state is requiring and requiring face masks for all of our students. So we will be looking at each classroom and determining how can, how we can maximize our classroom spaces to allow our students to spread out and be distanced throughout the room. We're looking at outdoor spaces and how to utilize them for increased learning opportunities. And like Doug mentioned earlier, we've, we're really exploring the idea of outdoor spaces utilizing tents and shade for our students. So we have ordered tents for each school and we'll be planning for ways to maximize those outdoor learning opportunities. In addition, we will maintain our students in cohorts with minimal interaction with other cohorts. So really reducing the risk of transmission by keeping students together in a small group with their teacher as much as possible so that if there is a positive case, there will be a smaller group or cohort that would need to quarantine. And then we also will be looking at staggering recess and lunchtimes at sites if that is necessary to keep cohorts together during those times. And then finally, access to campus will be limited to essential staff and students only. So we will really be reducing the number of people that are coming on and accessing our campus. And again, anybody who is coming on campus, any adult or staff member who comes on campus will be, have a temperature check and a symptom screen as well. And again, we know that the combination of distancing and face coverings and frequent hand washing provide the safest environment for our students and staff. And that is why we are requiring face coverings for all of our students and staff. And we're really committed to providing the safest environment possible for our school communities. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is provided, this is a mitigation protocol that was provided in the California Department of Public Health's recent publication from the state. And it defines different scenarios and what the school's response would be if a student or a staff member becomes ill. So we will be following this pro- protocol and we'll also have a COVID response team led by our school nurses who will act as liaisons with county public health office and help inform our decision making. So this is the established plan for responding to illness of a student or a staff. So you can see in scenario one, if a student or a staff member shows signs of COVID symptoms, they will be sent home and be recommended to have a test. And at that time, there will be no, no class closures or quarantines. And then we'll discuss a little bit more about how to respond depending on the results of that COVID test. So in, in scenario two, it addresses the close contact or exposure of a student or a staff. And it's important to know that a person is only considered exposed. And again, this is the definition by the California State Department of Public Health. They consider an exposure a person who's in close contact with a, with an individual who has a confirmed positive case of COVID nineteen for more than fifteen minutes. So passing in the hallway or brief encounters are not considered, considered exposures. So if a student or a staff has been exposed to a confirmed case of COVID nineteen, they will be expected to quarantine for fourteen days from exposure. And testing will be recommended, but a fourteen day quarantine is required regardless of the test results. And then number three, if a student or a staff member has been confirmed to be positive for COVID nineteen, they will be expected to isolate for fourteen days. If this is a student or a teacher, the entire cohort will quarantine and move to a remote learning. Any close contacts of the student or the staff will be notified and expected to quarantine for fourteen days. So again, this is where our COVID response team would come in to and assess the situation and do sort of our own internal tracing of who, who the other additional staff members or students who may have possibly been exposed. And then we will be contacting those individuals as well as consulting with public health. And then finally, if someone has symptoms but had a negative test, they may return to school three days after they are symptom free and have their symptoms have resolved. Okay, next slide. All right. So then the criteria for closure, the criteria for when a school would need to close after we have reopened. So once we have reopened, this was also included in the recent order from the governor. And first, I think it's important to point out that once we're able to return to school, there will be no mandate to close based on the monitoring list. So in other words, if the county goes off the monitoring list for fourteen days, but then later comes back on the monitoring list, we will not be mandated to close back down. The only reason that a school would be required to close after initially opening for in-person instruction would be based on the number of positive cases. So a school may close if there are multiple cases in multiple cohorts at one school or if there are at least five percent of the total number of teachers, students and staff who have tested positive within a fourteen day period. And the local health officer may also close a school if they believe that there's a reason for doing so. And a superintendent may close a district if twenty-five percent or more of the schools have been required required to close due to COVID nineteen. Schools may reopen. Once they've been closed, they may be allowed to reopen again after fourteen days and after they're thoroughly cleaned and disinfected. Next slide. Okay, so what's next? So our families will be receiving an email on July twenty ninth and will be asked to confirm their enrollment choice between the launch program and the in-person experience. So parents will be asked to make this decision regardless of the reopening date. So whether we, whether or not we are reopened or know about reopening by the twenty ninth, we will be opening that window for parents to make a choice between the launch program or our in-person learning experience. And the choi- this choice will really reflect the, the parents' wish for once school is reopened. So regardless of what is happening at the time, the idea is that once we are permitted to reopen schools, we'll be prepared and we'll be able to move forward with our staffing and be one hundred percent ready for our students to return to school. Okay, next slide. This one's my favorite. I just wanted to end by saying that we've been proactively preparing for our students to return and we know that we can bring our students and our staff back to our school sites successfully. We have been operating summer camps and summer ECDC programs since June. And our students and staff have been receiving symptom checks at camp and temperature checks every day. They've been following all of the guidelines and they've already been successfully implementing all of the health and safety restrictions. So as you can see from this picture, this is an example of our happy campers at our summer camp. And even though they're distanced and wearing masks, they're clearly happy. We can't see their faces, but we can tell that they're happy and they're enjoying their camp experience and their time together with their peers. So I just want to end by saying we know that we can do this and we're prepared and it is our goal to bring our students back to school safely. Okay, next slide. Any questions?
Thank you, Jenny. This has been a tremendous amount of work on the behalf of so many dozens and dozens of people across the district. So thank you for all of your work on this. We do have two speakers. Are there any kind of clarifying questions before we get to the speakers?
I had one. Go ahead, go ahead. I, I just have a question as to why we're not taking temperatures of the kids as they're walking into campus.
Like I said, that was a new, a new guideline. Like I said, that was a new, a new guideline that we learned of this week. And it was released from the Department of Public Health. So I can't speak to why they made that decision, but I'm assuming it's, uh, it has to do with student transmission or maybe, um, the, the students being symptomatic, um, and carrying, um, maybe the temperature screening not being an indicator of illness among children. Like I said, I, I'm not a doctor, um, but that is, I can't, I can't, uh, answer why, but that is the guideline, the new guideline, um, from the Department of Public Health.
But i- in light of the fact that it's a guideline, it, it can be something that, because it seems to me that taking the temperatures of the kids is, is an over, uh, uh, compensating, uh, task rather than an undercompensating task. And, and therefore, following the guidelines would require us to do less than take the temperatures. It, it can't hurt to take the temperatures, right?
Uh, it cannot, I, I, but I will say that I attend weekly telebriefings with the Health and Human Services Agency and the local San Diego Public Health Department. And it doesn't seem to be an effective indicator of illness. And so i- it, it's, th- that is the rationale, I believe, as to why they have determined that it is not a requirement. And I know they are called guidelines, but they're guidelines from the order from the State Department, so we are required to follow them.
So my, my question was, are all the teachers trained in the launch program? Because it's kind of highly unlikely that San Diego is going to move off that, uh, list in the next couple of weeks or three weeks, uh, and unless we get a waiver, we'll be starting everybody, uh, for distance learning. And if not, then what are some differences between the teachers who have not gone through the launch learning and how that is going to look like versus the ones who have?
And as we've, as we've engaged in this planning process, we have created multiple subcommittees, so we do have a distance learning subcommittee that is addressing, um, the training needs of our staff. Um, and the launch program is the, is the name of the program that we'll have for students who are committing to that program for the school year. Um, it, the other students will be engaging in a remote learning platform. But the, um, the training and there, the alls, all teachers will be trained to be prepared for both.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you Jenny, can, can I follow up on that? So then, how will the student experience differ between a student that starts the school year with the launch program and a student who starts the school year, assuming that we're still shut down?
Jenny, let's, let's see, Shelly, Shelly, right there. Our Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, Shelly Peterson, can address the very specifics related to that.
Yeah, so, um, I think Erica, your question was, um, how does the experience differ for a student enrolled in launch versus a student who will be enrolled in in-person, um, at school, um, for the twenty-twenty-one school year, is that correct?
Well, I'm saying, let's say the first day of school, that the in-person kids are gonna have to be remote. Like, so that first day of school, what's different between, or the first week of school, what is the variation in the kid, child's experience between someone who's already in launch and someone who's temporarily in distance or remote learning?
Th- there actually may be very little difference if both have to start remotely. Um, as Jenny's, well, launch obviously will continue to be a distance learning format throughout the year. But if our students who, um, anticipate coming to school at some point, if we have to start with remote classrooms in that way, um, we, all students throughout our district will have all the materials they need. They will have access to all of the same, um, online programming that our, um, launch students will continue to engage in. And, um, as far as the training, we have more than two hundred teachers who have, who are in the process of or have completed already the leading edge certification. Um, that is open and we have ongoing enrollment for that. We had initially set some, um, some dates that we needed pr- people to enroll by, but because of the current circumstance and Governor Newsom's announcement on the seventeenth, we've just kept that open. And we, um, we are anticipating that all teachers will complete that requirement either before school starts or after the school year does start. Um, it has some really important information like accessibility and communication and engagement that are really foundational pieces for a remote learning environment. Um, in addition to that, I know that I, um, spoke previously about acquiring some curriculum that really was more conducive to a distance format. Um, and that is the iReady reading and iReady math. So we have, um, incorporated and are working on training dates that will give teachers an option to take that training in iReady either prior to returning to school on August seventeenth or during the week they return to school on August seventeenth. And so that will prepare teachers with the knowledge and the curriculum to be up and running. Um, we will have to do a, a distribution for families. So we have purchased all of the necessary, um, technology. And we are, our tech department is in the midst of preparing all of that. So all of our kindergarten and first grade students will have their iPads. Um, second through sixth grade students will have, um, Chromebooks. And we will need to distribute those along with our first day packets and our Wonders curriculum and Investigation Mathematics. The added bonus will be that we also have some adapted online curriculum that can be used in conjunction with our core programs. So that as soon as we are able to open and bring our students back, we will be able to utilize those resources in addition to some of tho- those online learning resources. So that was a very long-winded answer for your short question of how will the experiences differ? Um, and initially perhaps very little as we begin. But it is important to note that even if everybody starts in a remote program, um, everybody's not in launch. Launch is specifically for families who opt into distance learning for the entire year. Otherwise, for our in-person, um, remote classrooms, um, our teachers will be those teachers who will go in, uh, in and out of the remote classroom experience and the in-person live experience, should that be necessary.
Thank you, I appreciate the long explanation, it's a lot to understand. Other questions?
Are, are the teachers then, uh, both of the sets that are in launch and also the ones in person, are they trained in the same thing then? Are they in the same, same training and they'll be prepared to, uh, to be do- doing both essentially?
Uh, they, they will be trained in the same, um, with the same resources, yes. Um, they're not in the same training, we're keeping those separate just so that there's no confusion. Because again, those in-person teachers, they will not stay in that distance format all, all year long. So we will be having some unique conversations, um, to both of those groups. For example, uh, how do I transition back to in-person learning? How do I transition into remote learning, should that occur? So we want to help prepare them and make sure that, that they're prepared, um, to do that. As Holly mentioned earlier, we had a great conversation with some members of the DMCTA, um, executive board to, to help, you know, get us started on those conversations and what that will look like for our teachers. The, the other piece, if I, if I may, um, the other piece is Google Classroom. And so we will ask teachers, all teachers to use, uh, Google Classroom in the remote environment. Um, it's just a more seamless way for teachers to interact with the turning in of assignments. It's, um, more seamless as far as, um, um, housing, information and, uh, kind of a, a, a workflow, if you will. Teachers were, will still be able to use Power School, they will still be able to use CSO. But as far as a learning management system, uh, we are going to work with all teachers who aren't already using Google Classroom, so that they will be using that as their, um, learning management system in a remote environment.
Is that gonna be different than, uh, for, for the parents, uh, using Google, Google Classroom? Is that gonna be any different than what, where they experienced it in the spring?
Um, potentially, that depends on, uh, many teachers used Google Classroom in the spring. Um, and some used Google Classroom in conjunction with Power School and CSO. So it will depend on what each individual teacher utilized, um, in the spring. And, but much of the feedback that we got from parents is that, um, you know, depending on what teachers were using, it was a little bit complicated, uh, for some. And so we're really hoping to streamline that and trying to, um, set systems up so there is essentially one-stop shopping for parents. They can access Clever and, uh, many of the other resources that are, that we rely, we will rely on and do rely on for that remote or distance format.
Thanks Shelly, can, can I follow up earlier? Sorry Erica, like, does any other things to ask?
Okay, I have a couple of questions, when you're done, do you want?
Okay, yeah, I just had a quick one, I just wanted to follow up on what Doug was asking before about the temperature checks. And I know that, uh, Jenny, you were saying that you kind of, um, have been attending things, uh, meetings that they've said that it's not as useful. Um, and, and, you know, that's great to, I mean, I'd be interested in hearing more about that. Partly is because, you know, I, you know, I've seen a lot of people doing the temperature checks. And I think like, you know, that's kind of what Doug is thinking as well, is probably that, you know, we see that these at numerous places. And I think the other piece of what Doug was kind of saying was that, uh, for, for instance, the, the mask wasn't a requirement, but we've decided to do that in, in the K to two grades. Um, so if, if, if we are prepared or we, you had previously had already ordered all these, um, thermometers and if it's not an inconvenience or a huge change, is it something that would be a very difficult thing to implement?
Well, we're definitely keeping, we're considering all, all of the guidelines as we're moving forward. And we have ordered additional equipment to provide the ability to, um, to take temperature checks prior to a student beginning the day. So rather than it being a requirement prior to a student coming onto campus, which is, which is how the guideline was written before, it may be something that could, we could consider, um, doing during the day with stu- with teachers and students. And we're gonna be looking at that at the site level as we roll out our safe reopening plan. So we're definitely considering all of the guidelines and how to implement the safest practice for our students. But as far as a requirement prior to the student entering campus, which is how it was written before, that is no longer the case. But absolutely, as we're looking at our safe reopening plans and, and looking at each site specifically in our ingress and egress, we'll be considering all of, all of those guidelines and how we can per- ensure the safest environment.
I would just kind of quickly comment that, say that I think that you guys are doing a great job and I appreciate all the work they're doing and continue to keep up the good work. Um, I would just kind of quickly say that, th- to the extent that we can be as safe as possible, if we can even go further, like if it's not a huge burden, um, not a huge cost, it's something that I think that we should be interested in doing. We can go to the extent that we can go and make it as safe as possible for all our students, make it as safe as possible for our staff. Um, I think that that should be the emphasis.
Absolutely.
Catherine, can I jump in real quick and follow up on, on Jiwa?
Absolutely.
Just on, on that note, uh, Jiwa, uh, I, I also want to remind everybody that the fall is gonna be flu season. And, uh, you know, people are going to conflate, uh, the flu with COVID. And these guidelines are for COVID. And we certainly don't want people coming with the flu and a fever that comes with that. Um, and, and so that overlap just kind of, i- i- it's gonna be crazy with all that stuff happening from a health, uh, standpoint. I, I can't see how it couldn't not be a positive to at least check everybody that's coming on the campus for temperature.
And also, uh, as I mentioned, we're really going to be looking at providing education and support for families and staff as well as far as what are the symptoms to be looking for? And really, um, making sure that families and staff are, are comfortable not coming to school with any sort of illness, regardless of flu or COVID. Um, that if a student or staff member is sick, that they understand that the best practice is for them to stay at home.
Jenny, what is instruction like in that situation for the student that has to go home? You know, for, let's say, even if it was like a fever, but it turned out to be nothing, sounds like they have to stay home for three days anyway, if I understand the guidelines correctly, what happens to that student's learning?
So if it's a student who needs to, uh, quarantine at home or isolate, um, and it's not a, a class cohort, that student then would be accessing instruction through more of our typical independent study process. If it's an entire cohort, an entire classroom that would need to quarantine based on, um, an exposure or a positive case within the cohort, then the class would, would move to more of a, um, remote learning, uh, with that classroom teacher.
Thanks Catherine.
Thanks so much Jenny and Shelly and all everyone, you know, all your support staff that's working so hard and I'm sure around the clock on all of these issues. Um, so my question is about the safe, uh, reopening task force and safe reopening committees. Could you just elaborate on what those are gonna look like, when they start? And how teachers, parents and anyone who wants to get involved? I don't know if community members are also invited to attend, but how those conversations are gonna start? And, um, just when and, and, and where and how?
So really, we started, uh, our district reopening committee, we started meeting in the spring. And that, the purpose of that committee was really to look at di- our needs really across the board as a district. Once we closed, we had our HR staff, our IT staff. We had, we, we had representatives from every team within the di- every department within the district looking at what we needed to do as far as at that point pivoting into remote learning. Um, what, and also preparing, because we weren't aware at that time that school would be closed for the remainder of the year, preparing to come back. And so there was, there was planning that we did to prepare for the end of the year. But as we approached the end of the year, there wasn't much more that we could do once school was closed, um, according to the health order, and we had no guidance as far as reopening at that time. So we, we, um, planned to reconvene, to readdress needs in the fall. Um, that committee, we have had a recent met- meeting. Um, but right now, like I said, we're really shifting to more of the site planning. So we look at the logistics of classrooms, we can look at the logistics at each site for restrooms. Um, how can we, um, socially distance in a line outside of the restrooms? Where do we need signage? Where do we need, uh, stickers on the ground to indicate distancing? So that's really going to happen with the school principal as the lead. And the principal is reaching, principals are reaching out, um, to staff and asking for the involvement of any staff member that is interested in participating. And then they will also be reaching out with, to parents to involve and, and involve parents in the process as they move forward with that reopening.
I mean, like Holly mentioned, there's a lot of parents who, you know, have actual firsthand frontline experience, either because they're physicians or nurses or for whatever reason. So I know there's a lot of great resources out in our community, parents, um, and, and community members. So inviting them to the table, I think, is, is essential right now. And the teachers, of course, because they're the ones that are every day in the classroom with the kids. And so, you know.
And we, at our most recent meeting, we had our principals and, and, um, invite teachers from each site so that then those teachers and the principal could learn a little bit more about the safe reopening plans. So that as they go back to their sites, we would have three people who had heard the same information and were ready to share the conversation and really lead the conversation and thinking at their school sites. So that it's not, um, it is a shared, um, shared cooperative experience for the teachers, but also being led, uh, the conversations being led by the teachers that were part of that committee meeting as well.
So when are we hoping for these site level task forces or committees to get underway?
Well, our principals have, um, graciously come back a little early from their Our principals have um graciously come back a little early from their vacations and are working on it immediately.
All right. Thank you so much.
I had, uh, before you take questions, I had a follow up. Are you done, uh Catherine? Okay, I had a follow up with just Doug and Jiwa about the uh temperature checks too. I mean, the one thing about having all everybody tested, including students, is that you're going to have a lot of people uh taking temperatures. They all need to be trained and uh if they're not trained properly, you're going to get bad data. For example, uh my wife works at a nursing home, they're taking temperature. Everybody used to come into the building. They gave the temperature because there's too many people, they gave it to somebody uh at the front desk. Oh, you're took the temperature. Oh, you're fine. Your temperature's ninety degrees. No, ninety degrees means I'm dead and I've been dead for a few hours. Uh, so you're not taking the temperature properly. Uh, so I might have a fever, but you don't know that because you didn't take the temperature properly. Conversely, if somebody had been standing out in the sun, talking to a parent, they'll come in here, oh, your temperature's now a hundred and ten. No, a hundred and ten means I'm dead too, because I can't warm it, because the sun and the forehead. So just you need to have proper training on that and it's all a caution. So by doing everybody, you got to make sure everybody is trained. That's my that's my piece. You can take questions.
I just want to clarify one thing about the um option for a waiver. Did I understand correctly that the state is giving us an option to seek a waiver, but the county will not allow it?
No, the waiver is part of the state order from the California Department of Public Health. But the the state and the county public health has to approve the waiver and then also go to the next step of consulting for approval from the state level. So it's not just that we apply back to the state, it has to go through our county public health and they're they look at our local data.
And has the county given any guidance on their willingness to approve waivers?
We haven't heard um anything specific about that, no.
I haven't heard, I I mean, I do, I do sense that there is, you know, there there has been in response to meetings that I've been in and questions that have been asked that I've been heard that I've heard, um districts have been encouraged to submit a waiver if it seems to be appropriate for their particular district. So a lot of questions are going around exactly uh the same as what we're hearing right now from you.
Let's get some speakers. Um, so we have Julia Hinton and Adam Fisher both speaking on this item. So we can bring them both into the call and we'll take Julia Hinton first. You are in the call, Julia. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm Julia Hinton, a second grade teacher at Delmar Heights School. I'm a teacher and a parent. And there's nothing like the first day of school and letting a new group of parents or students into the classroom for the first time. They walk in slowly, they look around the classroom in awe, find their seats and settle in for their first day. There's a lot of great anticipation and excitement and we have a whole school year together to learn and grow. And really, there's nothing like it. On the first day of school, I tell my students that I have two main responsibilities. One is to help them learn and the other is to keep them safe. I go on to share that if anything affects my ability to accomplish these two goals, then it welcomes a discussion. And this is how we create our classroom guidelines. So facilitating learning is what teachers do best. It's why I chose this profession. However, at this time, we're faced with a sticky situation. I've no doubt that every single one of us would like to be back in the classroom with students. But I can also guarantee that not every teacher is wholeheartedly feeling safe to do so. I woke up this morning with this thought in my head, we are not out of the woods yet. We are in the woods and the woods are on fire. Yesterday, I attended a Zoom meeting for teachers and it was communicated that unless one is a launch teacher, we will be going back to in-person instruction in the fall. This is the part where I became confused. Are we planning on going back to school physically or are we planning on preparing for distance planning to start the school year and then moving to an in-person instruction once we're off the watch list? Also, the information communicated to teachers differed from the information that was communicated to parents. There's definitely a need for consistent communication and a clear plan moving forward. Behind the scenes, parents are panicked because there isn't a clear pa- plan. Some parents are afraid to send their children to school. Most parents don't want to repeat what distance learning looked like last year. Then some parents are doubting that they can actually be in person for school, but are left wondering about what will happen. They are frantically in search of teachers, tutors or facilitators to help their children get the education they need. We still have time to create and plan a rigorous, meaningful distance learning program that integrates the online plat- online platforms that were revealed tonight that we have not yet been trained on. And the revision to the existing plan must include thoughtful collaboration with all stakeholders, parents, teachers, health agencies and the administration. Teachers and parents need transparency always, but especially during these uncertain times. It is important to provide clarity, to help ease concerns and fears and to establish trust in the district's commitment to keeping our community safe. Most importantly, the only way students can learn is when they feel safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Adam Fisher, he's in the call?
Yes, hi, my name is Adam Fisher. Um, first of all, thank you for all of your efforts in this very challenging time. I know it's not easy for sure. Um, given current information, it looks like San Diego is likely to be on the state monitoring list for quite some time. As the current uh cases per hundred thousand people for a fourteen day period, which is that key metric, um is actually at two hundred and eighteen, if you use the most recent info from the county website, based on the last two weeks of reported cases. So that is more recent than the hundred and forty-five that was stated earlier. So we're well over double the threshold and and not going down. In fact, actually today, San Diego reported its all time high number of deaths from the pandemic at eighteen and the highest number of weekly new hospitalized patients at a hundred and eighty-six. So given all of that, it looks likely that stu- all students will probably be in distance learning for a while after school starts, probably months and possibly until there's availability of vaccine. Plus, many more families are likely to choose distance learning for the year. As the distance learning student count of four hundred, which was stated in the webinar, that's from a survey from, I believe, about a month and a half ago. If you look at more recent information, such as a poll conducted by the LA Times in early July, um that showed that somewhere between forty-two and eighty-eight percent of families are not comfortable with full time in-person school. On the other hand, vaccine development is very encouraging with multiple safe and evac- effective vaccines looking more and more likely in the first few months of twenty twenty-one. Given all of that information, I have three main points for the board and the district to consider. First of all, the social aspect of distance learning. Since a critical part of school is the social aspect with peers, it's important this also takes place in distance learning. And many opportunities for virtual peer-to-peer interaction between pairs or small groups of students should be offered. Secondly, the structure of distance learning. It was mentioned that launched distance learning students weren't being grouped by prior school of attendance due to the numbers, that four hundred being relatively low. But with the numbers now likely to be much higher, this offers an opportunity to group students by prior school of attendance. This would further address proper socialization and forming and maintaining of bonds of friendship and provide a more community-based field to the program. And lastly, for returning to full in-person school, assuming one or more vaccines are widely adopted in the first few months of twenty twenty-one, which we all hope that is going to be the case, I would like to ask that consideration be given to being able to return all students to in-person classes at their school of residence in that situation, hopefully before the end of the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We can take additional questions from board members?
I I had an additional question. I I was uh um wondering like, how how do you envision, Jenny and and I guess Shelley, how do you envision the uh distancing uh situation? Um, is this going to be uh in for an opportunity for the teacher to think about using the outdoors and kind of how? Um, like, wha- what do you inv- envision their kind of their classroom looking like? I I know that it's going to be a difficult situation, obviously, having kids uh always, you know, they're going to be running up against each other at at certain times. Um, but is this going to be in where the teacher kind of, it's on there, um up to them to kind of, if they want to have a class outside, inside, outside, and uh it's kind of their prerogative how they want to run the class? Or how how does this, how is in terms of distancing, how is it going to look like if? Does that kind of make sense, kind of what I'm saying, Jenny?
Yes, um and Shelley, I'll let you um interject at any time. But um that's part of why we're looking at each site creating their own safe reopening plan. And we're really expecting our teachers to work with our principals to go into each classroom and examine and kind of get an idea of how that we could maximize that space. So in some situations, it may mean removing furniture and really optimizing that space so our students can spread out. Um, one of the great things about Delmar is that we don't have traditional classroom furnishings. And so our students are used to spreading out, they're used to moving out into collaborative groups in the hallway. They're they're um they're really thinking, they're not used to sitting in a row in a desk. And so that's really what we're asking our teachers and our principals to work on at the sa- site level is how might that look in each classroom? And to maybe even come up with a couple of examples at each site of this is how we're going to be able to do this. So other teachers can see that and really um go back to their classrooms and and be creative and come up with ideas. Do we have uh an outdoor, a table right outside of the door that the teacher could really it kind of expand that classroom by having a small group of students out there or outside at under a tent? Or it it's really going to be um specific to each classroom. But that's exactly the reason that we're asking this, to go back to the site, to um use the expertise of our of our teachers. Uh, they know their students and they know the classrooms and to really come up with some creative solutions for how to do that. And um and in fact, they've already done that. Our principals, every principal has been onsite at with a primary and an upper grade teacher to actually physically go in the classroom and say, okay, where might students sit? You know, when we walk through and when you're through, you're in classrooms all the time as our board members. And um, you know, we see students everywhere in classrooms. They're not sitting at tables, they're sitting under counters, in corners, in a beanbag. Um, and so it's really kind of with that mindset that we have asked our upper grade teachers and our primary teachers to go in and say, how many can, how many students can comfortably fit according to health and safety guidelines? Um, and promoting some social distancing among our students. Um, and I know Jason ha- is um going to do a co- a report on attendance and numbers. And we we anticipate that our having class sizes much smaller than we would in a typical year. So the good thing is is that in Delmar, our classes were, class sizes were already very low. And now we're hiring more teachers for the twenty twenty-one school year. And we have a number of families we anticipate opting in to launch, which will reduce our class sizes even further. Um, so um that in combination with, like Jenny said, um moving furniture out of the classroom. Uh, we're bringing lunch tables around to the outsides of classrooms where we're actually taking our indoor classroom furniture, setting it outside to see what distancing can look like and how we can accommodate um as um practically as possible uh so that we can open safely as soon as possible.
Thank you so much. I think that's really helpful because I think that I think part of it is that I I I wish, I wish every single parent in the district can do what we do when we go walk through the classrooms and kind of see how how learning is like. Because I think a lot of them are still thinking that our our classes are still in rows, our our still desks are just lined up. So it would be a very simple solution. They're like, well, why don't we just push this desk over there and then mark off six feet? And that's not the case of in our situation in in our in our district anymore. So my question is partly in to to ask is to say like, I, the way I kind of envision is that they're and and I've already seen kids kind of roaming out um and they're outside and they're they're kind of outdoors um in in a nearby spot. And they might be sitting on a beanbag right outside and 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 so it may not necessarily be like eighteen kids or or twenty kids that are just sitting in the classroom at all at one time. You can, they're going to be spaced out and we've already seen this happen um with prior to COVID. Um, and so that's, I I think it's very helpful, Shelley and Jenny, for you to explain that and and to kind of give it a little bit more light to that and clarity. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And and we are really excited about um the tents that we purchased. And we know having students outdoors among air that's circulating, we have an amazing climate. And we will be taking advantage of that to the maximum extent possible and um have enough tents for every classroom to to have designated space where teachers can take a classroom outside and teach within that outdoor learning space.
Um, maybe this is a sort of facilities question, but I'm wondering, how do we know, do we have an exact number of how many classrooms on campus that potentially we would use that don't have windows that, I mean, do all the classrooms have windows that open? Do we know that?
Not all of our classrooms have windows that open. Uh, in fact, there are many that don't.
Okay.
We'll say, uh, while outdoor is absolutely a great step to take, I I know that um I've I've had a couple of people email me a New York Times article about just teaching outside. Uh, this, the the age and the time we live in, with the HVAC systems, the ability to cycle air, while it is better, I'm sure, you know, finding opportunity to be outside is one thing. We are able to cycle air so that every approximately eighteen minutes, we are cycling the air through the room as well. So we we aren't sitting in stagnant air either if we have to be inside at times. And so I think by doing a combination of things, being able to open doors, being able to have that outdoor area as well as the indoor, we're we're taking steps as well with our mechanical systems to ensure that we are getting as much outside air in even when you don't have operable windows.
Okay. And let's say if a teacher wanted to switch rooms, would that be a possibility? If we go back to in-person learning and you know, we're onsite and they would rather have a a room that has a window that opens?
Typically, the, at our sites, the 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 room makeup is similar room to room. And so there aren't a lot of sites where you would have um a bunch of, you know, one or two rooms that don't have operable windows and a bunch that do that would allow that. Um, should that be the case, I'm sure that we would utilize a a a room with operable windows. But that they're they're constructed such that they have kind of some uniformity across at a school site.
Okay. And then as far as, I'm thinking logistically, I mean, I have my classroom, we're under a tent. Um, but I still need to bring materials out. And I mean, I'm assuming students are going to be sitting on something, whether it's just, you know, on a blanket or on some kind of a seat. Um, are we thinking about how we're going to get materials from the classroom to the tent and back? Like providing parts for teachers or whatever they would need to carry all the supplies?
Yeah, and 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 I think that will be dependent upon um what teachers decide to do outside. You know, there is much that they work with that's very portable. And um students with clipboards, um that students' individual supplies that they'll be able to carry out themselves. Obviously, they're not going, they're going to have to think about what that teaching and learning is going to look like for that period of time because they won't have their monitors with them. So technology in that sense will be limited. However, students will have their individual technology that I anticipate um will be able to to go outdoors with them. So I think it's all about thinking flexibly, flexibly about what our day looks like. And I anticipate that it will be a combination of outdoor learning and indoor learning, not strictly one or the other. Um, so that um teachers can really maximize both state spaces to the fullest extent possible.
Okay.
And and go ahead.
I was just going to see if there were more questions. It looks like Jiwa has one.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about, uh, I remember yesterday watching the webinar. Um, it was addressed that about students going from uh distance learning to the classroom. Um, and and if it was based on space available, I didn't know if there was a, the the flip side wasn't addressed. What if people, students wanted to leave and go into the launch program? Um, is that a, is that a possibility or is it based on space availability?
It it is a possibility and it is based on space availability. So our our launch teachers will have class size limits, just as our in-person um teachers will have class size limits.
Thank you.
Okay, um Catherine, did you just unmute? Did you want to say something else? Okay, all right, um, thank you for all the work. This is an incredible lift. Um, in addition to just what you would normally be doing to plan for the school year. So thank you to all of you for thinking through all the different possible scenarios. And in inviting input from the community and parents, teachers, um, and and families. So we appreciate that and and keep going with that. Um, we still have more than a month to go. Um, we are now at item seven point two, Board Report, Creating An Inclusive Community. Um, Shelley Peterson, Assistant Superintendent of Structural Services, is going to give us a presentation. This is an item that the board asked to be included on this agenda. So we can get an update on what we're doing in the district and what we can be doing to address inclusivity. So I will turn it over to Shelley. And you're mute, you're muted.
I apologize. Um, good evening again, Board President Halpern, members of the board and um Dr. McClurg. It it really is a pleasure to to speak to this very, very important topic. Um, and I thank you for asking to have it on this month's agenda. So as we think about creating an inclusive community. Um, we really think about this as not only uh essential to the work we do with children, but ongoing work. Chris, next slide, please. Our objective is to ensure an inclusive environment for all children and adults. Through training that equips us to collectively confront prejudice and discrimination. And as I said, this is um important ongoing work that our district is committed to engaging in. We, we won't stop at one training and as a community, we have to um recognize. That this is not only timely right now, but will carry us well into the future. And will continue to be um a timely topic for us to ensure we're doing justice in our classrooms. And as educators, we recognize our role in helping young children develop cultural competencies. And develop as individuals who will work to eradicate racism and promote social justice. Next slide, please, Chris. So our first step is to engage in anti-bias training. And we are working with the Anti-Defamation League to um get this training. And this training will provide us a foundation for exploring bias and its impact on individuals and society. And it teaches effective strategies to confront prejudice and discrimination. While simultaneously helping participants to recognize and respect diversity. It assists with developing intergroup communication skills, modeling effective anti-bias teaching methods. And increasing the overall cultural competency um of adults working with students. And and when I say that this, this training and we're committed to not just a a one-time training. This is just our starting point. Um, this is where we begin and where we work with uh adults. And initially, we'll start with leadership, but we will continue until every adult in our district has participated in training. And really, our goal is to then branch out into our community. And ensure that we are having inclusive conversations with students and teachers, administration. And our community. Um, next that slide, please, Chris. So one of the um exciting initiatives that the Anti-Defamation League has. Is, and they are the creator of the No Place For Hate curriculum. And this provides us with a framework for organizing and combating bias, bullying and hatred. And it leads to long-term solutions for creating and maintaining a positive and equitable climate. And when schools um really they engage, they they complete an application. And they commit to engaging in this work and creating a place, a a No Place For Hate school. They do that by building inclusive and safe communities. Um, which respect and equity are the goals where all students can thrive. And they empower students, faculty, administration and family members to take a stand against bias and bullying. By incorporating new and existing programs with a, one very powerful message. And they send a clear unified message that all students have a place where they belong. So those three bullet points really outline um some of the activities. That um a site-based committee will create and engage in. And they do these, um, they do three big activities throughout the year that are inclusive of community. They involve community in the planning. And all of that is in addition to um the curriculum, the No Place For Hate curriculum. So all of it's happening simultaneously and will happen um simultaneously. With ongoing training that will provide for the groups of adults within our district. Um, who will participate in the anti-bias training. And then once um all of the, the uh community-wide activities um are, we participate in those and those are completed. Then they do get identified, schools do get identified as No Place For Hate schools. All of our principals are already um eager and excited to begin this work. We have Jason Swallow and Andrea Sleep who are taking the lead on this for our principal group. Um, Jason Swallow already has experience as a No Place For Hate uh principal. And has participated in this program at two schools where he was an administrator previously in Texas. Um, and then after, at the end of the year, all eight of our schools, we anticipate will be identified as No Place For Hate schools. And we will consequently be a No Place For Hate district. Um, it, the curriculum includes, um, when they talk about the curriculum. And we move to create um places, schools of equity and combating bias and bullying and hatred. They, one of the, the key um pieces of that is moving from safe schools to brave schools. And they have components in the curriculum that include identity and culture, examining bias. Bullying prevention and awareness, uh, school climate and social justice. Next slide, please, Chris. And then um, community involvement is is a really key piece. We know that for something to really take root and become part of the culture of a district. Part of the culture of the community um that um is, is one that really participates hand in hand with the district. We have to bring in our community members, we have to bring in our parents, we have to have conversations. And sometimes difficult conversations with parents as a community. So we can address um the issues of of hatred and bullying and bias. So it begins with a site-based No Place For Hate Committee. And that committee is comprised of students, staff, parents and the principal. All of the um adults in that uh participate in the anti-bias training. And then um together, they create student-centered and community-based activities. That promote diversity and inclusion through discussion, active learning and reflection. Next slide, please, Chris. And that is the end of the presentation and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you Shelley, and we do have three speakers on this issue. Um, so uh we could take questions from the board first and then um, and then take the speakers. If we have any questions.
Sure, thank you so much Shelley, this sounds really exciting. Um, how does this intertwine with our second step curriculum?
Um, great, thank you. I actually had that as one of my talking points and I missed it, so I'm very glad you asked. It asked, it actually works hand in hand with our social emotional curriculum. It really addresses um um the issues that I, I mentioned um on a very large scale. And then our social emotional curriculum really helps the individual understand their piece and their part and self-regulation. So they go very nicely hand in hand, it won't be one or the other. And will be able to embed much of the learning within Second Step. And and talk about all of those pieces that, that really help uh students be successful um as one.
Thank you, and just to clarify, every staff member is going to get the anti-bias training, correct?
That is true. Um, because we are faced with um how training can be provided. We can, they have to do it um via virtually. And so we're limited currently to forty members per training session. So that, that we, we would have done it differently. I actually um had had a conversation much earlier in the school year. Um, and um with Eric Benke about anti-bias training. And we had talked about it being how we might launch our school year with our, our um staff, our Welcome Back Day. Uh, because of the format of the training and how we have to offer it now, that is not possible. And so we have to think about um providing the trainings and doing it in kind of cohorts. But we'll do them as quickly as we can. And um the, the trainings are also, take three to four hours. Well, three to four hours to be involved in a training for three to four hours on a screen. That is really, really challenging to stay engaged for that long. So to complicate it further, we have to break that, we, we are intending to break that training up into two ninety-minute sessions. And um we'll accomplish it that way. So it will take us longer, it's going to have to be training that will roll out continuously throughout the year. But our objective is to to have everybody trained in the anti-bias training and in, begin to incorporate parents in that as well.
Okay, great, and so those, you also mentioned, I think, ta- uh, did you say ta- are they called tasks, task forces for the and?
Um, so a site-based committee?
Site-based committee, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, will um, will it be possible for teachers across the district to engage? And for parents and um students to have some kind of interaction across sites? To open up the discussion at a, at a broader level?
That would be wonderful and, and the really nice thing about um. About how you design activities that are community-based and inclusive is there's no ceiling on that. So once we are able to engage with one another um and engage personally, um in person with one another. We, we absolutely can engage across the district, uh, across school sites and across communities. And and I think that's really imperative and I think it's really powerful to have those, to bring communities together. And really helps to really, to build a very cohesive message for our Carmel Valley and and Del Mar communities as one.
Great, thank you so much.
You guys ready for the speakers? And then we can ask more questions? Okay, so we have um Juliana Abraham followed by Marissa Matusiak. Go ahead, Juliana.
Hi, my name is Juliana Abraham. I'm a parent of a child currently enrolled at Del Mar Heights Elementary School. The two thousand eighteen nineteen school year was our family's first year at Del Mar Heights. And at that time, we had three children enrolled. Earlier this summer, I wrote a letter to the superintendent, board members and the principal of our school. Asking for transparency on what is being done to address racial awareness in the district. Since sending that letter, I've had the pleasure of talking with two of the board members, Ghiwa Mok and Erica Halpern. And I am grateful and eager to continue conversations with Mr. Swallow, our principal. Our family is an interracial family. All three of our children have shared stories with us of racial affronts that they have been on the receiving end of. And have witnessed directed toward other black children and children of color from classmates. In addition, we have encountered incomplete and sometimes inaccurate accounts of history presented in the curriculum. From conversations with other parents, I know that our family's experience is not unique. There is a gap for care for children of color and black children in our public schools across this country. And the Del Mar Union School District is not an exception. As a parent, I would like to help bridge this gap in care in any way that I can. It's not just children of color and black children who benefit from racial awareness and inclusion in schools. White children benefit too. One hope I have is that friendships that begin in kindergarten will be fostered and encouraged. Throughout the entire public school experience. One final point I have is that the COVID nineteen pandemic we are facing right now. Is not unrelated to addressing racial awareness in schools. There are clear racial disparities that we are seeing in this pandemic. That have systemic and institu- institutional roots. Our public schools form one of this country's largest institutions. What we do now to address racial awareness has a public health impact today and in the future. Thank you for this time to speak and I hope to be a part of intentional forward movement on this issue.
Thank you. Um, next we have Marissa Matusiak, followed by Ari Matusiak.
Good evening, President Halpern, Dr. McClurg and members of the board. My name is Marissa Matusiak and my daughter just finished kindergarten at Del Mar Heights. My husband will also be speaking after me, he'll be giving, I'll be giving context about our experience in the district thus far. He'll follow up with our thoughts on uh what we think um should happen and how the district can make improvements on creating an inclusive community. First off, our daughter had a great kindergarten year and overall had a positive experience in her class. However, we did want to highlight one experience. Around the time of Martin Luther King Day, our daughter's class was taught a poem where one of the lines read, I may not be a Washington, a Lincoln or a Lee. As in General Robert E. Lee. We found ourselves surprised that a poem she learned in school would name Lee a hero and effectively equating him with Presidents Washington. Lee, as we all know, was a traitor to the Union and fought to preserve enslavement. The poem continued, but I can be the very best there is to be of me. The obvious question from a child learning a poem like that is who is Lee? We had that question in our home from Gabrielle, we imagine other parents have gotten that question over the years. And in fact, we learned that specific poem had been taught for more than a decade. Upon her flagging the poem, the name was removed, but the damage was done. Our daughter got a lesson about slavery. She literally went through the names of every single white child in her class and asked if their parents believed in slavery. Did they want her to be a slave like Lee did? I mean, she's fine, we talked it out over weeks and it took weeks for her to accept the revised poem that no longer rhymed. Um, and was better than the former. In addition, upon talking with other parents in the class, we also had to give them context to help with their conversations that they were having with their children at home. The onus should be on the school and the district to ensure that parents are informed about these teachable moments like these. Because of, and because of this situation, our other parents shared with us that their older students had experienced being called racial slurs. And it just shouldn't be like that. We expect better and hope the district will make diversity and inclusion a priority. We hope the district will root out systemic inequities and biases in the lessons and in the curriculum. Hire diversity to ensure students don't go their entire time at a school without benefiting from the perspectives and experience of a teacher of color. Our schools must provide a safe space for all, for all children, no matter their creed, their skin color and their race. Our district, in collaboration with parents and administrators, should be in solidarity to ensure our children are prepared by informed teachers. And a rich impactful curriculum to be good citizens and stewards of the world. My husband and I are committed to helping and supporting our district's efforts to achieving a more inclusive community. And we look forward to working with Principal Swallow and all of you um at the district in this very important work. Thank you so much and um, we're glad to hear that there's a sense of. Thank you so much, and um, we're glad to hear that there's a sense of urgency about achieving these next steps.
Thank you.
Hand it over to my husband.
Hi.
Turns out it's the same account. Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you uh, for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, and uh, just to follow up on what Marissa has said, I think the, the, the story is, is self-explanatory and unfortunate. Um, and it is, and isn't, it was an instance, not an overall experience at the school. As Marissa said, Gabrielle had a wonderful time in kindergarten. But that experience and story out, outlined what was effectively um, what we would characterize as an act of omission. Um, there was a lack of recognition in the first instance that there was a problem with a poem being referencing General E. Lee. Um, and a problem that was uh, laid out over multiple years. There was a lack of um, awareness with respect to how the curricula were being designed and, and, and structured. And then on the back end of, of the, of the experience, there was a lack of sort of clarity about the process. We were addressed immediately um, and uh, and incredibly empath, empathically by Principal Swallow. But uh, the, but the clarity about what happened next was not there. And so as, as the district moves forward and does the work of the No Place For Hate curriculum and the committee structures and all the things that we commend you for, um, it, it, it needs to come with uh, a, a thought about the overall process that the district is undertaking uh, in terms of how to make sure that the schools are consistently and rigorously upholding diversity, equity, and inclusion principles. Um, and that there are mechanisms in place for parents, teachers, and students alike to understand what to do when they see something or when they experience something, when they hear something. Uh, and how to ensure that there is follow-up to uh, those experiences such that they become not just the teachable moments that Marissa talked about, um, but actually uh, a way forward for the school and the district as a whole. Delmar is a wonderful place. It is a privileged place. And it is, uh, there are very few students of color in the district. And so it becomes incredibly important, not just for those students, but for all students, that there, that there be a consistent and rigorous commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion uh, in all facets of the curricular and co-curricular experience. And it's incredibly important for the students of this, this district to get that instruction and perspective as they go on to become future leaders in our community and in society overall. As students who are starting, quite frankly, with a leg up uh, in the world based on uh, where they live and um, and who they are. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. And I think everybody who just spoke offered to be involved with the uh, the school-based committees that are going to be developed. So that's great. Um, um, I'll just mention that I love the idea of teachable moments and taking the opportunity to um, to do that exploration as a community and as schools, um, when opportunities arrive, arise and, and um, which they inevitably will. And I know that that's kind of part of the culture of, of the school. Uh, the teaching is, is to look for those moments. So I'm hoping that that will apply here as well. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think, well, I mean, I think basically Ari kind of echoed what I said last time already. So I mean, I'm not gonna go too much further into that. Um, but uh, I, I just, I do want to say, I thank you, Shelley, for the presentation. I, I appreciate that was well thought out and that the work that you put into it. And it's, and, and I, I really appreciate the commitment that you're making, talking about anti-bias training. Um, and it's a repeated commitment. And that was something that, um, as I was just looking at the agenda, that's something that I, I had made a talking point or made a note of. Just gotta say, like, I hope that this is a repeated instance. It's not just something we do at one training. And then everyone's, you know, often, and, and we're all, we're all free of racism, you know? And, and so I appreciate the fact that you do understand that it's a repeated commitment, that it's something that we're committed to as a district, we're committed to um, as a board thing. I mean, to, to, to make sure that this is something that we, we repeatedly look at. And then we're revisiting it and we're continuing to, to um, build on what we've done in the past and, and and work our best to, to do our best to remove, um, and to eradicate racism and, and, and this, and qualities that are, that exist. So I, I really appreciate that. Um, and I am glad that there are opportunities for parents and the community to be involved. Um, and I, you know, I, I hope that they, parents and, and do take it seriously as an opportunity. They do get involved in, in um, and one other thing that I was gonna ask was, is this something that we're gonna think about in terms of like, kind of how we had Screenagers programming and, and those type of like movies? And that to involve more people in the community and to, to bring them into have these discussions as well?
Uh, yes, absolutely. You, you know, that, that at least is my uh, vision and how we will move forward um, in this ongoing work. And, and part of, part of what our schools will engage in is um, there are pieces of the anti, the ADL um, resources. And it talks about um, assessing yourself and your school. And, and that's why we are beginning with the anti-bias training because um, you know, as, as, as the parent um, spoke to um, that, that overall, you know, wonderful experience in kindergarten and, and no ill intent with the poem that was used. And yet sometimes unless we are trained and our awareness as adults is, is really increased um, and we're examining and looking at our practice, w- we almost don't know what, what we're doing. So, so that is one reason that training is so vitally important to all of the adults in the district, so that we really can be reflective and, and examine our practice. And then another um, that was brought up in, from, by one of our speakers was, how do we respond to the incidents? How do we respond to, to what has been called the, the teachable moment? What do we do when we're presented with these opportunities? So I'm, I'm really looking forward to engaging very broadly in these conversations across our district when, with um, you know, a, a very, very broad audience.
Thank you so much. I'd, I'd really love to, to hear about this more often, like in the future, like we kind of revisit this again and kind of see what progress we've made. So like, we kind of see if there's, you know, we, we've held X amount of meetings and like, people are very receptive. And it'd be something that I, I'd love to be able to hear more about in the future to see kind of the, the progress that we're making. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I'll be happy to continue to report on this.
And I'd like to add, if, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, but I, I'd be willing to participate in this anti-bias training. I think it sounds really exciting. Um, just, you know, throwing the board on there. Um, if they want to join me, I think that would be so, so great for us. Um, and also I just want to second um, one of the remarks from Marissa. Um, she had mentioned maybe looking at staffing and, and s- having that reflection for students who are sitting in a classroom, do they see themselves in their teacher? And I think that that's um, important as we um, are hiring, are we looking at hiring a wide array of people? So I'm just, I like that idea.
Thank, thank you. And I, I appreciate your comments. And I do want to let you know that, uh, the contact at the Anti-Defamation League, um, Kelsey Young, she actually has a nephew in our district who attends Sage Canyon School. And we did have a conversation about how board members can be involved in the training. And so Holly and I will, will follow up on that. And I think that, um, you know, there might be some unique opportunities for um, members of different boards throughout our area to participate together. Um, because the group sizes can, can't be smaller than fifteen. So maybe there is a creative way to, to organize so that um, we really can branch out and um, get this, this training and these conversations going.
Okay. Great. Thanks, everybody. If there are no more questions or comments, we are going to move on to the next item, which is the board report on the facilities update. I am getting asked that that involves Kristal Hathi.
That is correct. Uh, thank you, for President Halpern, members of the board, Dr. McClurg. Uh, I just added Dwayne Mears, who is here as well. Uh, I'm going to get us started with a presentation on our uh, facilities update this month. And just bear with me a moment while I multitask. There we are. Uh, so this month with our facilities update, we will be talking about the Delmar Heights School rebuild, Pacific Cones Ranch School Number Nine, and our summer projects. And uh, we do have Dwayne Mears, as I said, here, our consultant with Placeworks, uh, who's been helping us through the sequel process. Uh, and he will be able to speak a little bit as we look at our Delmar Heights School rebuild update and our coastal update. And so I'm going to speak to some steps that we've taken to this point. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about the coastal permit process, the coastal permit timeline. And then I will share a little bit about the potential rebuild impacts related to the coastal uh, development permit process. So I wanted to start with the steps that have been taken. And in July twenty nineteen, district staff and architects met with the city uh, reaching out to learn more about what we needed to do related to the coastal development permit. Uh, we were told that we were not, uh, to worry about a permit, that it was a review process. But we, we knew that um, we were in the coastal zone. And so as we talked about this and we got into the spring of this year, uh, we began reaching out again. And uh, we, we did uh, work with architects on this, but we also worked with Placeworks. And uh, Dwayne and his team did uh, the majority of the, the direct reaching out to the city as we got into the spring. And so I asked Dwayne to be able to speak a little more to the process and uh, the steps that they tried to take in, in getting uh, input from the city on the coastal permit. So, Dwayne, if you could speak to that piece, uh, I appreciate it. And I wonder if you're muted. Hi, Dwayne. I may have just muted you as you unmuted. I apologize.
Dwayne, you're still muted. There you go.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'll turn over. Uh, uh, good evening. My, my name is Dwayne Mears. I'm with Placeworks. And uh, we were asked um, about the issue about the coastal development permit. Uh, so we assigned a staff member to research this and contact the city, City of San Diego, about it. Um, we contacted the planning department. We went through a number of different people asking for an, an answer to it. Um, I think it was on May one that we got, finally got an answer from someone. And that answer was no, that a school district would not be required to, to get a, a coastal development permit. We were a little, we were, there were still questions about it. We were uneasy about that answer. And so we continued to uh, ask questions and dig. Uh, we also talked to the coastal uh, commission itself, the staff. And in, and then on May fourteenth, we got the reverse uh, decision that from a supervisor that said, no, in fact, uh, you do need a coastal development permit. So that's, there was some uncertainty about it. It was confusing. We, we were um, a, a, a bit concerned about the original answer. It didn't seem to be like the right answer. Uh, and so we kept digging and we did finally get a supervisor to say that in fact, the permit was required. And that was on May fourteenth, I believe.
And I think part of what has made this, uh, made that a bit of a struggle was the time it took to get answers, getting the uh, incorrect answer and starting from the assessment at the initial meeting that it wasn't uh, required. And so as we, we moved through, and that was the, the answer that we were given, district staff and architects did submit our application to the city immediately. Uh, we did have a little bit of an issue with um, the city and their um, submittal process. But as we got it submitted, uh, and this had drug on a little bit, Dr. McClurg and myself reached out directly to the director of uh, Development Services and had a couple of conversations. And we have been uh, fortunate to have, at this point, a strong response from the city once they recognized that there had been some, some mistakes made. Uh, we met with city staff on July sixth uh, of this year to do a process review. And at that time, uh, shared the background with the city staff, shared the steps that we had taken, and shared the robust sequel process we had gone through. And uh, city staff was very responsive at that point. Now that we had contact points, they were uh, gave us information and input on how to move through the process, and they committed to expediting the process. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the process and what they shared in the next slide. But we also had a follow-up meeting with city staff just uh, yesterday. At that time, uh, we have already been told that our uh, submittal is complete. They're in the review process. Uh, the staff that uh, we spoke with were uh, asked some questions, but um, no questions that were, were not, were related to things that we are not able to provide. And we were feeling very confident uh, with the responses they've given and the steps that are being taken, that we will be able to move through in a, a quite an expeditious manner at this point. So we are ongoing with communication. Uh, I reach out and connect with uh, people on that, that team, as well as uh, we've had uh, great support from their uh, associate, associate deputy director, who has been, was assigned to that initial meeting with the city and the, the process review. And they have uh, been exceptionally responsive after we had this uh, team assigned. The steps that we'll go through with this permit process include a cycle review, which is a fifteen business day cycle review that they committed to at that process review. This uh, if, is a clean or minor questions means we proceed to the next step with the hearing officer. Uh, if the review has larger questions, it would lead to another cycle. Uh, based on the meeting we had yesterday, it, it very much looks like we should be able to move through with this um, single cycle. Uh, they did share that a typical cycle review is twenty to twenty-five business days, and this expedited process is saving us a couple of weeks. Moving to the hearing officer typically takes approximately thirty days from the end of the cycle review process. They do hold their hearing on the first and third Wednesday of each month. And based on that input and the fact that we started our cycle review on July eighth, and we uh, have uh, final timeline for the reviewers, uh, one of our reviewers is uh, August third, that the last review should end by. Uh, the, that would put us at a hearing officer, um, based on a thirty days uh, meeting on September second. Uh, again, any further cycle reviews would require uh, another fifteen business days. But again, we had a very positive meeting yesterday and are headed in the right direction with being able to complete this in the first cycle. Uh, the coastal development permit is issued if the hearing officer approves, um, should we make it to that uh, meeting on September second. So with that in mind, I wanted to share with the board, we did, did share with the board last month that uh, we uh, believe that we would have at least a month uh, pushed back on our demo. Um, our original uh, uh, schedule prior to the coastal application was to uh, start demo and utilities and grading on July sixth. Uh, have construction begin September twenty twenty and construction complete September of twenty twenty-one. Based on the steps that have been taken with coastal, uh, we would see the potential for the application to be uh, complete in September, uh, early September of twenty twenty, which would mean we could begin construction in October or November. Potentially earlier, um, should we be able to get it in that September second, where we'd be definitely into October, and then completing construction in October of twenty twenty-one. Uh, as we talked before, we were already planning on looking at how we can uh, phase the construction in order to have classrooms completed first. And if we are able to have a construction completion in October, that would definitely lead us to the potential to have students on campus to start the year, while we might have some items that are being finished. So we have been working with Balfour Beatty uh, directly and closely to ensure that the uh, bids that were submitted will be held to and that we will be able to move forward with our construction projects so that we can get students back on campus. And so with that, that is our review of the coastal update with Delmar Heights. We also have uh, a very minor coastal zone impact at Pacific Cones Ranch School Number Nine. Um, this was made a, uh, was, it was something that came up through our uh, purchase of the property. And we uh, are, have submitted our application. We have a similar timeline with this to Delmar Heights. Uh, we do still see construction beginning in November of twenty twenty and being completed in May of twenty twenty-two, the school opening in August of twenty twenty-two. Um, we also had some slow response time in the initial process with this. However, we have uh, built connections with the city. Um, they understand and we, this won't have any impact. So we know that uh, the application has been submitted. And uh, we are working on a completeness review, and we will be able to move forward with the construction as we had already planned in um, November of twenty twenty. and we will be able to move forward with the construction as we had already planned in November of 2020. And then looking at our summer projects, last month I was able to share with the board blacktop resurfacing, where we had, I was able to share some pictures of what the blacktop was looking like before. And a month later, I'm able to share with you the works going on at Carmel Del Mar, the work in the top right, where we were doing some of the resurfacing, and now it's already striped at Sage Canyon. So those sites had, Carmel Del Mar was more cracking and some issues there. We have a lot of our blacktop that was breaking down, granulating, causing some issues at Sage Canyon. Both of them are in wonderful shape and will be ready for students to return. Torrey Hills, we're still working on the scale based on the field upgrade. And the field is very much underway. As you can see in the top left, our backstops have been removed, all the footings are out. The grass has been removed on the right side. And then that middle picture shows the gopher mesh installation that started. And they are digging down so that we can put that gopher mesh in and have it down on the sides to keep them from tunneling underneath. And then we'll have that further underlayment that will be going across the field to ensure that we don't have the gopher issues that we have been plagued with at that site over time. And then finally, as we talked about earlier in the board meeting, we have the summer projects with outdoor sinks. So this is district-wide, we do have installations at Ocean Air and Delmar Hills. This gives you a visual of what those look like. On the bottom right, there's a gentleman who's installing the sinks. We did need to find areas where we currently had some plumbing. And so we, Mike Gallus and his team have worked with, I think, AR Weed in this case, identifying the places where we can install them, finding spots where we could put the sinks in, putting them in with some distance in between so that we can have students washing at both places. In some cases, they are next to restrooms. In some cases, as you can see in the bottom right at Ocean Air, they're near lunch service areas. And so trying to find those spots where we can have outdoor sinks that will support us when we come back to school, but also be a value add to our classroom, our school sites, even after we come back and even after we move on from the COVID pandemic and still have the use of those sinks outside. And so with that, include the update. We'd be very happy to answer any questions the board may have related to the summer projects, the Delmar Heights School rebuild project or the Pacific Cones Ranch School Number Nine.
It looks like you've been comprehensive. Any questions? Okay. In that case, we will move on to item eleven point one, Board Approval Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty twenty-one school year. And I believe this is submitted by Jason Romero. Jason.
Good morning. Yes, so this item is an item that we bring to the board every year. It is just our declaration that we have to ensure that our district does the proper thing by ensuring that our, our staff is fully credentialed and in the need for folks that are not credentialed. We have this in place to ensure that we're able to meet our rights under the California Department of it.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Aye for me, motion to pass. Thank you, Jason. Oh, actually, stay there. Eleven point two, Board Information Staffing and Enrollment Update. Over to you.
Great, thank you. Forward President Halpern, governing board members, and Superintendent Dr. McClurg, it's my pleasure today to present to you our enrollment and staffing update. Chris, am I going to have control of this, or do you? I believe you do.
Sorry, muted. I do, it just, it kind of froze on me and didn't give you, give me one, one more try here. There we go.
Awesome, thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to present the enrollment and staffing update to the board and community. This presentation we usually do in August, but it's very timely so we can explain to the board and the community what the district has really done to ensure that we are staffing intentionally with lower class sizes going forward. I know Shelley mentioned briefly that in her presentation, but it's really going to be a commitment of the district this year to ensure that we're maximizing the spaces we're using in a way that creates safe return to school opportunities for our students. So, next slide, please. So this is our district enrollment and staffing over the past five years, past four years and the current year coming up. So you can see, starting in the two thousand sixteen and seventeen school year, we had five, four thousand five hundred and fourteen students. The next year, the seventeen eighteen, four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven. And then we started a little bit of, and we've talked about this over the years, a decline in enrollments. So you know, the following year, we had four thousand three hundred students and then four thousand two hundred students. And our current projections are showing us to be under four thousand students this year. So what has happened, and the reasoning behind that, is really the home sales and turnover rates in our community have really slowed down, and our community is almost built out. What has actually helped us to not even have larger, a larger declining enrollment is the growing Pacific Highlands Ranch, or what we've referred to at previous board meetings as East Pacific Highlands Ranch. So if without East Pacific Highlands Ranch, you would have seen numbers close to the mid three thousand five hundreds. But what we do recognize is that as that area is now growing and will be built out over the next couple of years, you're going to see a slight uptick over the years. But this really kind of just addresses where we're at with enrollment and staffing going forward. So you can also see in data below, in the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year, we had a hundred and ninety-one sections. So basically, a hundred and ninety-one, I like to say, general education teachers. So this isn't talking about preschool, and this isn't talking about our special education assignments. This is really just specifically looking at our K six sections. And so there was a hundred and ninety-one general education K six sections. As the enrollment went down, we started to reduce the number of sections we've had. And then you can see this year, and this year, even though our enrollment is going to be six hundred students less than it was four short years ago, we're returning to the staffing levels of that, of those years. So really, where six hundred students could mean a decline of teaching positions, nearly twenty teaching positions, we're addressing that by ramping up our teaching positions by twelve compared to last year. So, next slide, please. We're going to go over the school by school data. And briefly, I'm going to talk about the number of students that were last year compared to the number of students this year. In these data points, you're going to see the number of families that have opted for distance learning at this point. A little caveat to that data is, and you'll see this asterisk in every single school site, slide, school site, slide, is that the final classroom sections will be determined after August third, when families make the decision between launch or in-person choice. So depending on where that falls, we're really going to have that, that number be a little bit fluid. But the commitment is going to be for smaller in-class, in-person classroom decisions. So our distance learning classrooms are going to kind of match what our class size was for this year in the traditional school setting. So, you know, if we went to like twenty-seven, twenty-eight students in the upper grades in the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, the distance learning classrooms will be similar to that. And same thing with our K through three sections. Distance learning classrooms will be very similar to what they were in the years past with those class sizes. Our in-person class sizes are going to be dramatically less. So let's take a look at Ashley Falls. In the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, there were five hundred students in the program, twenty-two classroom teachers. Next year, there will be four hundred and ninety-two students and twenty-three classroom teachers. So less students, more teachers. Next slide, please, Chris. And so similarly, at Carmel Del Mar, you'll see there was five hundred and fifty-seven students last year, twenty-four classroom teachers. Next year, this current coming school year, in the two thousand twenty-one year, you're going to have five hundred and thirty-eight students and twenty-six classroom teachers. Next slide. So at Delmar Heights, we have a couple of things happening with Delmar Heights. One, a decline in enrollment that's just naturally happening. And a lot of students for the size of the school decided to take an opportunity to do distance learning and our Spanish immersion program. So the kindergarten numbers at Delmar Heights, let's just say, for example, are going to be around the low to mid twenties, but yet we're still going to have two kindergarten classrooms next year. So that's just showing a little example of our commitment to low class sizes. But four hundred and forty-four students enrolled at the school site, three hundred and fifty students next year with the number of students taking advantage of distance learning and, you know, the Spanish immersion program, which still means that, you know, we were going to lose ninety-some-odd students. We would have reduced by, you know, four or five teachers, but we are going down in teachers. But really, the class sizes are also going to be less than they were this year. Next slide, Delmar Hills. Delmar Hills, two hundred and sixty-four students last year, two hundred and forty-eight students this coming school year, and fourteen teachers compared to thirteen teachers. At Ocean Air, Ocean Air is showing a drop in enrollment and, you know, and also a decline in teaching staff, but not comparatively to where it could have been. We really, you know, could have lost, you know, four teachers at Ocean Air, but really, we're prioritizing those low class sizes, so we're only losing one teacher. Sage Canyon, Sage Canyon, same thing, they're going down, you know, eighty students, yet at the same time, only reducing one, one classroom teacher. Could have been another school where we reduce by four teachers, but we're only reducing by one, just for the same purpose of keeping our class sizes low. Sycamore Ridge, same thing, we're losing students. At Sycamore Ridge, there is a strong possibility that we're going to be adding an additional teacher to this mix also in the upper grades. And a couple of our school sites, and in our last slide, we'll talk about the number of schools that are showing optionary, not optionaries, excuse me, class combinations, a combo class. And in one of the feedback that we've gotten over the years is a five, six combo is a more difficult combination class in some of our other grade levels. And we're going to prioritize really looking at that when we get our numbers of families who are participating in the launch. Currently, right now, Sycamore Ridge and a couple of our other school sites have a five, six combo on paper. But really, what we're going to see is how many families take advantage of distance learning, or maybe take advantage and come back off of distance learning and choose in-person teaching and learning. So there may be an opportunity for us to just move one of the, dissolve the combo and move one grade level to fifth or sixth grade. So strong likelihood that that will happen at Sycamore Ridge. And then finally, Torrey Hills, Torrey Hills also has that same situation with a five, six combo. And we're going to be really exploring that. They're going down over a hundred students, and that could easily be five to six teachers, depending on where the grade levels are with the declining enrollment. And what's happening with Torrey Hills is this, this school has our highest transitivity rate. And over the years, they've had a lot of what I'd say mid cohort growth. So a number of families joined the Torrey Hills school site, not starting at kindergarten, but let's just say coming in at the second or third grade level. And a lot of our businesses and companies have had, reached out to me personally over the years, to staff this school and send employees to this school in particular. And we just haven't seen that over the past couple of years. So for whatever reason, you know, they're not coming from their host countries to Qualcomm or Illumina as they have in the past. And so there's been really a decline in enrollment at Torrey Hills, and it's going to continue to be that way next year, where we're losing over a hundred students. So then inside the numbers for two thousand nineteen, twenty, if you look at this, this, this slide right here just kind of paints a picture. And Chris, I'm going to actually maybe ask you to toggle back and forth between this slide and the next slide. But this is showing district-wide, our sections last year and the number of students we had at each of the grade levels, and then the class sizes. So on average, class size, our kindergarten was around twenty students. You know, first grade was twenty-one. And then if you look at our upper grades, there really is a jump to our upper grades because from K three, our contract has, allows the district to staff up to twenty-two. And then in fourth through sixth grade, up to twenty-seven and twenty-eight to keep families whole. So we do approach those caps in many of our grade levels, but many of our grade levels are below that. So naturally, you get an average. And I'm going to compare that to what we look at, where we're looking at like for this coming school year. Thank you, Chris. So as you can see, in the next school year, there's really a concerted effort to have those average class sizes be a couple of students less at the K through third grade. So you're seeing classes in the high teens as opposed to the low twenties. But really, you can see the difference as we're talking about class sizes in the upper grades, where they get closer down to that twenty, twenty student average. So really, what we've done is try to prioritize and create opportunities to have class sizes right around, you know, a district average of twenty students. So in our kindergarten through third grade, you know, we're looking at creating classrooms currently that are between eighteen and nineteen students, and fourth through sixth grade, twenty to twenty-two students. So that's, that's been the, the goal and the priority of the district to ensure that we have those spaces that, that are significantly less packed than they have been in the past. And we're fortunate enough, and I know Shelley briefly mentioned that in her presentation, where we're already starting off with class sizes pretty low comparative to other public school districts in the community. You know, in some of our neighboring, neighboring school districts, you know, Poway, for example, Chelsea Moore, who, you know, came from Midland Elementary, I had a conversation with her just about class size. And when she was over there, her sixth grade class was thirty-seven students. So, you know, having a smaller baseline to start off with has helped us be able to maximize our spaces and ensure lower class sizes. And that's really going to be the commitment this year. You know, we're not done, you know, we're not done with, with ensuring that we have low class sizes. And if we do get spikes at a certain grade level, we're going to address that with more staff because the priority this year and going forward for the two thousand twenty-one school year is to ensure that our class sizes are manageable for all the, all the things that we need, know we need for social distancing and prioritizing, you know, maximizing social distancing spaces. So there is that combo classes, Chris, you want to toggle back real quick? The combo classes have really hovered, you know, somewhere between, you know, three and eight. And next year, they currently, on paper, they're six. I, I am without a doubt promising you, we're not going to have some six combo classes next year. That's really just kind of on paper where they need to be because I'm going to look at what happens with distance learning and families that are opting at the fifth and sixth grade level to either go back into in-person learning or, you know, participate in our launch program. And I want to be able to prioritize which grade level gets those teachers to make sure that we have less combos and more, more opportunities for students who participate in a single grade level experience. All righty, that's inside the numbers and our staffing and enrollment update. If there's any questions, I would love to answer them.
Just for starters, Jason, could you just remind everybody how we're funded? And whether, which I know it's not, whether our funding is by pupil or is it some other way?
Great, absolutely, thank you, Erica. And yes, so in many of our school districts, you know, over ninety percent of our school districts, well over ninety percent of our school districts in our state are, are LCFF-funded school districts, which means that through their basic local patrol funding formula, there is ADA compensation for students that attend school. So in a, a school district that has, you know, let's just say, a random school district of five thousand students, there is a formula that is created based on the unduplicated students they serve that creates a per-child allotment for funding. So let's just say a random school district of five thousand, it's twelve thousand dollars per, per student. So they would get, you know, five thousand, kind of twelve thousand dollars, and that's their basically funding under LCFF. In a community-funded school district, like the Delmar Unified School, the Union School District, we are funded under our property taxes. And so a portion of the property taxes are given to the district, and that amount is higher than, than LCFF. So our, our funding isn't related to enrollment nor attendance. So we're funded basically through the, by the community in a community-funded district. And so we're able to prioritize the needs of our community based on that funding and not prioritize based on and not prioritize based on, on, on enrollment and attendance and things like that. Although we strive for, you know, high attendance.
Thank you. What other questions do folks have? Okay. There are more questions, we will keep going. Item, thank you so much, Jason, for the presentation. I love those low class sizes. And I'm sure we'll have lots more information in August. Okay, so item twelve point one is preliminary items for the August regular board meeting. Are there any items for the agenda for August? Okay, if not, we are going to re-adjourn into closed session and leave this meeting open. And we will be back here after our closed session. Okay, see you guys there. Okay, see you guys there. Hey, everybody, we're just waiting for staff. Thanks for standing by, we'll be getting started again shortly. Hello, everybody, okay. Um, so we'll get started. We are at item fourteen point one, reconvene open session just under the wire at ten fifty five P M. Um, item fourteen point two is report of action taken in closed session. The governing board met in closed session and I would like to report the following action taken in closed session. The board met, uh, the board approved the superintendent's employment agreement with a salary of two thousand, uh, two hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. The board approved the assistant superintendent's employment agreements with a salary of two hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. Item uh, five point one is adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. The meeting is adjourned at tw- uh, ten fifty six, fifty six P M. Thank you for joining the meeting and good night.
Oh my god.
They need to all get back on.
Yes.
Can you call them?
Yeah.
I'm in.
That's a disaster. God.
I was, I didn't even hear him.
You know what I told them in about ten thirty?
Did they have to, did they have to do it because they did it in closed session?
You, they have to do it, yes.
Hello, what do we miss?
We are live and we need to approve the last two items that you actually announced. And we just need to take a board roll call vote on both of those, on both of those items.
Right. Just give me a second to get the notes back up.
And we also need to extend the time because we are past eleven o'clock. So if we could have a board vote.
Connect the motion to extend the time period of the meeting past eleven P M.
I'll move to the next time.
A second.
Okay, um, I think I heard G Y and Doug. Roll call vote, member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Halpern? Yes. Okay. So um, item fourteen point three, board approval superintendent's employment agreement. As I announced, the board met in closed session and approved the superintendent's employment agreement with a salary of two hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and twenty. Roll call, first I need a motion, I guess I need a motion. Do you need a motion and a vote or just a vote? Okay, so um, is there a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll move to approve the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. Item four point four is board approval assistant superintendent's employment agreements. The board uh, met in closed session and approved the assistant superintendent's employment agreement with a salary of two hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and seventy. Is there a motion to approve the uh, agreement? Agreements.
I'll move to approve the agreements.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me. The uh, uh, the contract, the employment agreements have been approved. I guess we'll re-adjourn the meeting. So fifteen point one adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Aye for me. The motion to adjourn the meeting has passed and the meeting is adjourned at eleven oh seven P M. Good night again.